Alright, here we go. It was a hard ending. It was. I got a good question. By show of hands, if you knew someone was getting away with murder at the expense of kids, would you act? By showing hands. Some of y'all not gonna act, okay? We gonna have to figure it out already. Alright. I want y'all to hold on to that really quickly. I wanna figure out who's in the room. So, if you're an educator, please raise your hand. Let me see who my educators are in the room. Alright, thank y'all, appreciate y'all. If you are in the tech industry, raise your hand. Alright. None of the tech folks? Okay, yeah. All two of y'all, I'm here for it. That's great, glad you're here. Uh, if you happen to be a nonprofit leader, can I get any nonprofit leaders? Alright, y'all in the space, boop, boop. Uh, any media? Okay, media, thank you for being here. Appreciate y'all. Uh, let me get philanthropy. Any philanthropy? Okay, yes, we do have a little philanthropy. Y'all, y'all ever been in a room with philanthropy? Don't wanna name themselves, they're like, "I'm here." We're just, "I might be here." Don't look too close. Alright, uh, and are there any school board members in here? Alright, can y'all stand? Can we get our school board members? Can y'all stand? Just stand really quickly if you are a school board member. We just need to make sure that y'all showed them a little love. You know what I mean? If y'all, if y'all haven't hugged a school board member in a while, make sure that you let them do that all the things, okay? Um, and so I'm glad we went through. Did I miss anybody, by the way? Okay, nobody wants to acknowledge that they were missed. Either way, it's good, you're here. I'm glad we got through titles. I need you all to set those titles aside, and I need you to embrace a new one with me. Is that okay? Alright, can I tell you the title that I need y'all to embrace? I want you all to be my jury. We're going to court. Alright. Alright, now, for you properly to be our jury, uh, I need everybody to raise their right hand. I gotta swear you all in. It's a legitimate thing. So, do you swear that you will well and truly try this case and render a verdict, uh, that is true based on the evidence? If you do say "I do." Alright, alright. That's good. Now you all are properly appointed. You all are my jurors, and we are good to go. So, earlier I asked a question. I asked if you knew someone was getting away with murder at the expense of kids, would you act? And you all, everybody raised their hand. And so, I contend that someone has gotten away with murder. Okay? And you all are my jury. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about what that looks like in this moment. But I need to define what I mean by getting away with murder. Is that okay? Alright, so, I grew up in a black family. I'm black, that's a thing. And I grew up with a beautiful black mother and grandmother, and they're educators. And they would come home, and they would talk about such-and-such got away with murder today. And what they meant was not the legal sense of murder, but what they really meant was this. They meant that someone got away with something deserving of consequences without receiving punishment. That's what they meant. And that's what I mean today when I say someone has gotten away with murder. So now that we understand what I've defined here, who in our society has gotten away with murder? I wanna play a game. I wanna play a game. I do. And so, take out your phone or a piece of paper. Okay? I'm gonna give you five clues to my jurors. And at the end of the five clues, I want you to write down who you believe has gotten away with murder. Is that okay? Here we go, jury. Y'all are on the case here. Let's get it done. Clue one. They have participated in some of the most heinous exclusionary practices that only can be likened to apartheid. Clue one. Clue two. They have coined the phrase "school-to-prison pipeline." Clue three. They are largely white and control the resources, teachings, environments, and access of majority-minority kids, a fact that mirrors a time of slavery pre-emancipation. Clue four. They serve as the heartbeat of democracy with the ability to shape civics curriculum, voter registration, and education programs, and student councils, and student representative programs. Clue five. They are, they, they are not only changing history, but they're erasing it and making it illegal for students to learn accurate history. Alright. Now, ladies and gentlemen of the jury, y'all have been able to read through all of the clues. Who is getting away with murder? Anybody? Who's getting away with murder? Back here. Okay, she didn't, she didn't name the whole, she didn't name the whole school board. Okay. Are we in agreement that school boards aren't getting away with murder? Is that okay? Hers in particular, though. That's okay. It wasn't on the mic, it's fine. Uh, could you raise your hand really quickly? We got something for you, uh, for your speaking, uh, and answering. Raise your hand, I just wanna, in the back. Yep. Alright, there we go. Hello. That's nice. Alright. Alright. I'll now take the next ten minutes to make the case. Uh, and it's your job, jurors, at the end of this ten minutes to determine whether or not school boards have gotten away with murder. And if they've done so, have they done it alone? Now, look, I'm a lawyer by trade. That is a fact. So, my wife would say, "That's a fact, Jack." Um, it's an inside joke, it's okay. Uh, and you all should know that I work for a national nonprofit that supports elected school board members around the country. We have done research on elected school boards, and so all of this is fact-checkable. But let's dive into the evidence, jury. So, examining the evidence, let's go to point one. They aren't representative of the students they serve across every dimension: race, disability, gender, identity, language, and income. Let's look at the data. The data tells us that fewer board members identify as people of color, having disabilities, being LGBTQIA+, or speaking a language other than English at home. Put plainly, we have an over-representation of white school board members and an under-representation of minority school board members. The majority of our school board members also identify as women. So they're not just white, they're white women. And Latinx students are especially underrepresented on local school boards in districts with twenty-plus percent of students of color. The majority of school board members who identify as white are also over the age of fifty-five, whereas the majority of minority school board members are under the age of fifty-five. So not only are our school board members white, not only are they women, they're also over the age of fifty-five. Okay? So, jury, what does that mean? What can I conclude for point one? Because it's not illegal to not be representative. This is the truth. When school boards aren't representative, they don't know the challenges, backgrounds, needs, or advantages of students that they serve, which means that their service is largely an intellectual exercise at best. Point two, I'm gonna get to point two. I, I grew up in a, in a, in a Baptist church, by the way, so if this, if this, uh, offends you or hurt you, just say ouch. It's fine, it's okay. Uh, or you could say amen, I'm with it, okay? Let's go point two. Point two, not only are they not representative, according to the data, the majority of our board members don't think it's important for school board members to reflect the race and identity of their students. Because, so look at this. Not only that, about only one-third of white board members understand the importance of representing the perspectives and experience, experiences of their constituents. And so what do I conclude from this? I conclude that the majority of our school board members don't even want to know, nor do they think it's important to know the challenges, the backgrounds, needs, or advantages of the students they serve. Which, if you're gonna be representative, if you're not gonna be representative, excuse me, at least you're gonna be a little curious, right? But that's not the case, jury. That's not the case. Let's go to point three. Only thirty-seven percent of the majority of school board members uh, agree that systemic racism is an issue that needs to be actively addressed, and their top priorities don't address the needs of low-income students, historically disadvantaged students, nor students of color. When we go into the data, uh, school board members of color, in fact, are two times more likely to acknowledge that systemic racism is a barrier for students and that they should be actively addressing this issue. When you look at their top priorities, these are some fine priorities. Everybody cares about mental health. A lot of the student achievement generally. Uh, and then teacher shortages and pipelines. That's great, but when you disaggregate it by race, what happens here is that for, uh, school board members of color, they care deeply about what's happening to, in terms of outcomes, relative to students of color and of low income, and they care about race, racism, and all the barriers that exist there. So, what can I conclude about this point? The majority of our school board members don't believe that racism is a barrier that should be actively addressed, which means that these leaders won't focus on crafting policies that address matters like discipline, funding, school placement, that have racial impacts on students of color. Not only will they not address it, they don't feel like it is their job to do that. Go to my final point here. I'm ready to rest. I think the jury is good here. I think I'm making my point solidly. Alright, point four. They aren't trained and supported on how best to use their governance authority to address critical issues. And when they receive training, it's inadequate. It's terrible. The data is clear. Most school board members lack experienced training and support in many of the focus areas that are critical, especially around managing and approving multimillion-dollar budgets. And you all know, your budget is your moral document. It's what you actually believe in. And when you think about, uh, issues of dressing, uh, race and equity, it's very low. Low training. Now, for those who do receive training, they say, "It's, it's trash." It's terrible. I don't even know why they tried to do that. Especially when it comes to addressing issues of racism and equity. And so, I conclude here that the majority of our school board members lack the skills, knowledge, to address critical issues that can change the trajectory of a young person's life, good or bad. Simply put, they don't know their roles, making them ineffective, uh, and largely incompetent. Now, let me say this. Because I think it's important to say. These are for school board members who aren't representative. I'm not saying the individuals here who, who are here aren't representative. It's one of those things, if I'm not talking to you, I'm not talking to you. Okay? So I don't want y'all coming up to me after we talk about, "Let me tell you why I'm representative." I, I believe you. Own that. We're talking about those who are not. Now, why do I say that? Because there's some character evidence that I must give the jury, uh, that I think is important. Uh, I gotta concede some facts here. And one of the facts that I need to concede is that it's really tough to be a school board member in particular. For some of my school board members, uh, they largely are asked to do this job largely for free, uh, late at night after they put their kids down for bed. Uh, they do it without any effective support, training, uh, and they're being attacked personally and professionally, and they're asked to fight against racism and the status quo. That's tough. How many of you all agree that's tough? That's tough. That's tough. So now, when I think about this, uh, I, I, I don't know, guys. I can't say that school board members are in fact acting alone. From this data, I'm convinced that there must be an accomplice. Must be an accomplice. And so, take out your paper, take out your, your, your phone. I'm gonna give you three additional clues on who I think the accomplice is based off of the data and information that we currently have. Alright. Clue number one. They don't know who serves on their school boards and that they make life and death decisions. Clue number two. They don't vote to ensure school board members are representative, and in most cases, school board members are elected by twenty-five percent or less of eligible voters. Clue number three. They aren't demanding that school board members receive training, onboarding, support, and continuous training as we do in other professions like teaching. Okay? Now that you've heard these three clues, jury, I'm gonna submit to you that there's an accomplice. I want you all to determine who is the accomplice of school board members. Who's helping them get away with murder? Non-voters. Who else? What else we got? What you got in the back? I see your hand. Yeah, you. Oh, okay. We snitching on school board associations. Okay, this is great, I love this. I'm gonna go here, and I'm gonna go here. Commute? Thank you, sir. Right here, this is so, we, the damn people. Us, we are the problem. We are the problem. Uh, we gonna do it together. Uh. Alright. So now that we've aligned that school board members are getting away with murder, and that we, the people, are part of the problem, what can we do? I submit to you that it's all about the three Ps: people, power, and professionalization. We need to make sure that we learn who are on our school boards. Who is serving on our school boards? After you learn whether or not who they are, then you gotta make sure they're the right people. Are they representative? Do they care about the stuff? Are they thinking about student outcomes, experiences, environments, access? Are they thinking about how to actively deal with and support our democracy? Train young people to be good in our democracy? And are they doing this with a racial equity lens? If they're the wrong people, then what are we doing to make sure that we get the right people in? Who are we actively encouraging to run for elected office? Not only that, who are we mobilizing in terms of votes to make sure the right people get in? And when you think about professionalization and power, we gotta make sure that we're advocating for training, onboarding, and continuous capacity building for these leaders. And then you gotta figure out who's helping school board members? Who's thanking them, praising them both publicly and privately? Uh, and who's donating to their reelection campaign for the right people? Uh, and just supporting and showing up for them in general. And I say this because when done right, school board members who are representative, trained, have capacity, and equipped with the skills can and will embrace innovation, not block it. And they will create processes and policies that focus on addressing systemic barriers and inequities for students. How do I know this? I'll tell you how I know this. I know this because at the age of six, I found myself handcuffed at the local police precinct. My mother had caught me stealing, and we were having a scared straight moment. It was, uh, it was an experience. Y'all ever see Mama Lisa? Just tell her, uh, "Thank you for giving Ethan right," okay? Uh, and I tell this part of the story because that's not the end of my journey. I had the opportunity, based off of school board policies, to attend magnet schools that were outside of my school boundaries. I had the opportunity to stand, to attend a performing arts elementary school. Yes, I can sing and tap dance. It's a whole experience. I had the opportunity to attend a media magnet school. I started coding in the nineteen hundreds. It's a fact, Jack. I went to a law magnet high school. I think I told you I'm a lawyer. Right? I had the opportunity to not only attend those schools, but get bused for free to attend those schools. I had the opportunity to attend college before I actually attended high school for free. And I dual-enrolled in college and high school throughout my high school career, which allowed me to graduate at the age of sixteen. I was eighteen my senior year at Howard University, and I got my law degree by the time I was twenty-two years old. But the truth of the matter is... Thank you. But the truth of the matter is, I'm the exception. I'm not the rule. There are far too many of us who are still getting sucked under the cracks. And school board members play a huge part in making sure that these policies are able to help transform the lives of these young people. And so, I submit to you, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the jury, after you've heard my story where school board members have helped me with innovative experiences, they've given me resources, they've given me access to all the things, how can we make sure that school board members are not just not terrible, but they don't get away with murder? And I tell you that they must act. So I go back to the first question I asked. But now I ask not whether you would act, but when and how would you act if a school board member was getting away with murder? Thank you. Let's jump into some Q and A here. Uh, if you have any questions. Uh, I think I'm doing really good on time. We have eight minutes. Uh, and I do, I, I do, I do want that. There was the thank you, I apologize. There's the thank you. Here's my contact information if you, you want. I'll leave it there. If there's any questions, I'll take questions at this time. Uh, I'd love to hear what you all have, uh, for us now.
Um, Ethan, you talked about elected school boards. What about appointed school board members? Like charter schools? Like how do, how do school leaders or community leaders ensure that they are also representative? Holding up the values of these kids that are being represented at the school?
They are both actively and just as important to make sure that they are knowledgeable about their role. All governance leaders must do their roles well and know their roles. They must be representative. And once those things are true, better outcomes can exist for young people. I oftentimes talk about, uh, many of you all had the opportunity, I think, to attend the, or know that this is the seventieth year anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education. That's right, right? Raise your hand if you didn't know that. Great. Oh, if you did know it, if you did know. Raise your hand if you did know it. Okay. This is the seventieth year, it's crazy. How many of you all? So the majority of you all are familiar with Brown versus Board of Education, right? And we talk about it, you all could probably recite why it's important. But how many of y'all can tell me the five white board members who made the decision around Brown v. Board? You can't name them. That is a problem. They are unnamed, but we exist, we are people. Someone voted them in to make that decision. It was a societal decision by the vote of democracy. Or not, because only twenty-five percent of the vote, folks are getting voted in to be school board members. And so we are at fault. What are we doing to change that? And so, I submit to you charter, elected by the mayor, elected by the people, all of those governing bodies must be really good at doing the role of governing and using their authority. Another question? Yes, please.
Would you talk a little bit about, like, so like you say, you know, how school boards be represented in the media? May or may not be accurate? Um, so like, what is the best way for community members to do that assessment that you're talking about?
That's great. Uh, for those of y'all who may not have heard this beautiful question, uh, and it's true, sometimes to my media, uh, family in the back, uh, not, not every time, not, not, media doesn't do, uh, and have the opportu- they're not afforded the opportunity, that's the way I'm gonna put this, uh, to be in and know everything and tell the story in a way that's comprehensive about the leaders, uh, that exist. In fact, if I told you all some of the stories that existed on my school board, you all would be cra- y'all would be like, "Man, y'all need to make this a movie." And I agree. We should. Uh, but what I'd say in this moment is, the best way to make the determination on whether or not a school board member is representative of, uh, your beliefs, values, and systems, is to go to a damn school board meeting. See what they're doing. See what they're not doing. And then ask to meet with them. If a school board member can't meet with you, but they're elected to represent you, it's a problem. That's a, we already starting at a place that you, you're not my people. Because if you just can't even, let alone not be with me, but you can't even meet with me to tell me why? And so, you know, I would, I would say, go to a school board meeting, see what they're doing, ask to meet with them, and ask them the tough questions when you sit down with them. Leaders are meant to lead. And if you had the opportunity to lead, you should be able to, uh, you know, say what it is. Uh, and, and I'm not even going to, you know, the challenges of most leaders, but, uh, I, you know, I will say, I know how difficult it is to let your ego go relative to leading. But if you can, you know, I think, get it right for community, that's the best way to do it. I see a question here.
I kinda want you to build on that.
Go ahead, build on it.
It's not so much you go to the meetings, but how do you prevent the law from getting involved in it? So when it's incumbent to a coaching board that's to, a chance to meet a candidate in advance of an election, how would you be better positioned to answer that question?
This is an absolutely brilliant build-off. So you all should know, when I talk about people power and professionalization, I think about the full ecosystem of support for school board members. Which means that in every, uh, in every city, every county, every suburb, there should be a training organization, like my friend back here, who's trying to make sure that those who are offering themselves up, that they are representative of the values, and that training organization is supporting them to be ready. And to the extent that they're not ready, that training organization can also make sure that money's spent to get, to not support them and to win against them. And if that's not the case, then we have a problem. And that's not the case, because when you talk about the infrastructure in which we are building around our country, some people are paying attention to school boards, Republicans, uh, and others are not Democrats. I'm one of them, I voted to be a Democrat, all the things. And I can tell you, we're not doing a deep enough dive in support, and philanthropy is slow to actually answer the call here to make sure that individuals are, um, able to run. Here's the other truth I wanna acknowledge. My co-CEO, co-founder's here, Carrie Douglas, uh, and she oftentimes acknowledges, uh, as a woman, uh, it is like seven times harder for them to see themselves in the elected office. And you have to ask them and tell them that they are qualified, even though they are doctor, MBA, and some of us just be rolling out of bed and getting on the school board. That's a fact. And so, you know, I just wanna make sure you all, when I talk about the role that you all play, you all should think, think about someone who you believe would be a good school board member. And I, I want you all to text them, tell them that I think you'd be a good school board member. I, I'm not just saying, I literally want you to think about this. I want you to text them, because that could end up changing, that can end up changing the lives for young people you don't know yet. Question here. Yes. Come on, build comment. I don't need anymore, I'm having time.
And, um, I'm, I'm gonna do a shameless one. So the first thing-
This'll be the last question, by the way.
She was asking about, "How do we know who's there?" Yes, I totally go to the school board, but also during the election, when you're going to see who's running for Congress, But also, during the election, when you're going to see who's running for Congress, we're there. So, we're nonpartisan, but you know, right? If you go, those who will be at the Democrat things, and those who will be at the Republican things. So you can see, that's how you can align whichever way your values go, you can see what those, who those candidates are. Now, your stock image, I'm a member of the board, that's, that's not.
Come on, Austin. Come on, Austin. Yeah, you are, yeah, you are. Yes, we love Austin, by the way.
I know. Yeah, so, but what I want to say is also, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna leave here, catch a train to be at a meeting tonight, where our whole purpose is, one of the questions is, what do we should, what should we be doing? What should we stop doing? What are we doing well? What is, what is a, what should a student look like? And what should a student look like when they graduate? And what should they look like when they're going to our school?
That's great.
Because we're a new board, we've only been together fifteen months. But we know, and when I look at that data, you're right. And I see that there's only six percent of African-American in our state, and they make up thirteen percent of the district. And that we are still not yet on grade level. This board is really a different, we're, two-thirds of us are classroom teachers. So, we, we are about that, we have a chief equity officer, I can't remember her new title, but you can't say that no more?
Part of the problem.
That's a problem. And my thing is that, but parents, community, you have to be, my phone is not wrong. One time this year, well, I'm like twice. I've got an email where people are saying, "What you're doing for black children in this school district is criminal." Where are those people, where are those volunteers? Because that is the case. Now, we're coming in and we build new things in, that's over time. But the community is how, is what's gonna drive that. We can say what we can say, the administration can do what they can do, but when you call, things move and shift and show up. But anybody that wants my card, let me show you how you can help us move those big shifts for those kids, especially those vulnerable communities. My district is East Austin, Northeast, twenty-eighth Title I school.
Come on.
Do not be an accomplice, be an ally.
Come on, come on, we gotta thank her, we gotta thank that whole board. I know you have a colleague, Ophelia, who also, who identifies and has a disability. They are certainly representative of the community, and I, I really appreciate that. The other thing I just want to acknowledge before we close out, school board members are also really important to the democracy. When she talked about us being on the ballot, uh, and, and of, of like either congressional races or the president, I have an eighteen-year-old daughter who has the opportunity to vote for the first time this year, and I want to acknowledge, she's not necessarily excited about voting for the top ticket, but her daddy is on the ballot. And she is excited to go vote for her daddy for the first time around school boards. And so, you know, I just want y'all to know that we are, in fact, helping to ensure that we're saving our democracy. Uh, and so that's a huge piece. Thank you to our school board members, thank you to this crowd. I really appreciate the opportunity to share with you all. Uh, if you want to learn more about the work that we do at School Board Partners to support elected school board members to make sure that they're not getting away with murder, but they're actually changing lives, like this school, this beautiful school board member here, please get in contact with us. Thank y'all so much. Oh, my board chair is in the back, Gregory! Thank you, he's the board chair of School Board Partners, if you haven't had, thank you, Gregory.